We'll bring this meeting to order. And to start with, we've got the Girl Scout troop here with us, our special guest of ours tonight, the Swirly Girlie Twirlies. Twirly Girlies. There we go.
Swirly Twirly Girlies.
I'm old. You have to forgive me. So they're gonna lead us in a pledge of allegiance tonight. You all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for resistance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was awesome. You guys did great.
Chair's coming.
We'd like to remind you, please, if you have cell phones or pagers, if you even have pagers, to please silence them and put them on vibrate. And before we go over the minutes of our previous meeting, we're gonna recognize the Swirly Twirly Girlies.
You got it right, Ben.
Finally. I'm old, but it takes me a while. They've been accepted to do a special thing in St. Louis, and I thought it would be nice if we recognized them for their efforts. And Rena, would you like to address that?
Okay, well, I'll read our letters that we sent out. Okay. Okay, I would like to introduce you to a group of local young ladies that have earned the privilege to be members of a very elite group. They have been invited to participate in the FLL World Championships to be held in St. Louis in April. Out of over 3,800 teams worldwide and 47 teams based in Indiana, Swirly Twirly Girls was chosen to represent Connersville and the state of Indiana at the competition. This new program, which is the Junior First LEGO League, introduces the youngest students to the exciting world of STEM. STEM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. The program featured a real-world challenge to be solved by research, to capture young children's inherent curiosity, creativity, and to direct them toward discovering the possibilities of improving the world around them. Junior FLL utilizes theme-based challenges to engage kids in research, problem-solving, and introductory engineering concepts. The cornerstones are its core values: to emphasize contributions of others and to others, friendly sportsmanship, learning, and community involvement. Connersville's Junior FLL team, under the direction of Rena Kaufman, who does all of the robotics here in Fayette County, and they were coached by Kathy Doyle Sturgeon and myself. It consisted of kindergartner Grace Kimby, raise your hand, Grace, first graders Taylor Jarboe and Ashley Sargent. These young ladies took on the challenge to investigate the theme, and they chose for their theme tornado, thus the Swirly Twirly part of our name, according to the specific challenge instructions. They had to document how they researched and what they learned on a creative poster, then they build a model out of LEGO elements incorporating a moving piece. The culmination of all their hard work was taking part in an FLL meet in Greenwood, Indiana, where they were the youngest and the tiniest group competing. Team 1280 professionally discussed their project with other teams, engineers, coaches, sponsors, parents, and volunteers to celebrate their achievement. Team 1280 was so successful at their task that they received a standing ovation as they entered to be recognized at the parade of teams. And then the letter goes on to say, "The purpose of our letter is to ask for donations to help us go to the World Championships." And now, since then, we've been invited to the state championships as well. So that's what these young ladies have accomplished. They have surpassed my expectations as a coach. I am overwhelmed with their empathy, their community service feelings, and what they have accomplished, and I finally have their medals to award to them. And they didn't know that. Taylor, will you come and get your medal? Congratulations. Grace? Congratulations. And Ashley? Congratulations. And we are, and if anyone would like a letter that tells you all that and where to send your money? Okay, we are trying to get support. The Girl Scouts supported them, which paid for all of their equipment, or their kit, I guess you'd call it. And we have been working out of the Boys and Girls Club, using a room there, and we have been sponsored by some other people in town, but we need a little help to get all the way. We're lucky, be lucky. The World Championships are not in Shanghai this year. They're in St. Louis, so we don't have to go as far. Would you ladies like to say something? How about a "thank you"? Can you do that?
Thank you.
Well, Taylor, Grace, and Ashley, the Fayette County is very proud of you and your accomplishments, and we wish you the best of luck. Give you a handshake before you go?
Yes. They're working on that handshake. You can go down the line if you want.
Thank you. Yeah, I think they want to shake your hands, simply down the line.
Thank you. Congratulations, ladies.
Girls, come back up there. That gentleman wants to shake your hand.
Congratulations, Taylor. Congratulations. Good luck. Fine ambassadors who came to St. Louis, I'm sure.
They're gonna be attached all over the world, across Spain, everywhere. They're gonna have a really good time.
Now, just a note to the public here, the meeting will not be adjourned until donations are given to the little girls.
I'll leave an envelope for you.
Thank you. Now, if you don't want to stay for the entire boredom of this meeting, you're more than welcome to go, or you're more than welcome to stay and watch, see what goes on here. We appreciate you being here. Thank you, ladies.
We appreciate your inviting us. And they were looking at ways to help their community, and what they came up with is they wanted in the outward, outlying areas, they were worried about their friends and their neighbors and their pets that might be outside, didn't know a tornado was coming. So they designed and built a little town. Then they built-
Of Legos, of course.
Of Legos. Yeah, I didn't mention it was all Legos and robotics.
It's all Legos.
And then they made out of Legos a car, an emergency station, that would have a car in it, as would the robot, and Gracie made that robotic stand, and they would come and they would pull a bell, and the bell would let them know that there was a tornado. And then they have mothers with walkie-talkies and a little bit of everything in their little town to help everybody get in and safe. That was their idea. Great.
Hey, girls.
They're still working on the town, that's why we're doing this.
Their towns in different states. What are you telling?
You?
Or you could say, "That's it."
No, they're very grateful for anything.
We appreciate you, young ladies. Please keep us posted as to how you do and what your progress is.
Oh, we will.
We'd like to have a follow-up report when they get done.
When they get back from work. And they should be in the paper one day this week, so.
Very for a victory, because there'll be celebrities there, too, like the president of LEGO should be there. Will I Am is notorious for showing up because he's a big supporter, and Morgan Freeman and others, so they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna have a really good time. Not to mention you've got the high school and the middle school teams also competing, and they love these little guys, and they'll have a great weekend.
That's neat.
Interact with them. They were so impressed with these young ladies, the high school and the middle school teams that we met when we were at Greenwood. And they're like, wow, they're getting started young, so. Do you hear some?
We'll get the video, and we'll bring it back.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And they've had a little bit of sugar, so we better- They had their snacks before we came.
That's okay, it brings a little excitement to the meeting.
Thank you. Here's a bunch of information to about what we're doing. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Here's a bunch of Jack.
There you go.
Thank you.
Now we move on to the exciting part of the meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any additions or corrections to be made? If not, a luncheon motion to accept them.
I'll move to approve next question.
You have a motion, no, second?
Second.
It's been moved to the second end. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, is there any mail? Anybody have any mail? Okay, I'll move on to the county attorney, Mr. Appel.
I have nothing at this time that needs to be addressed.
I like this, this is moving on quick.
Yeah.
Okay, reports. Anybody from the Budget Committee or the Wages Committee want to speak?
We have continued to be working on it, but it's not complete yet, so.
Okay.
I have made progress, but not ready to distribute just yet.
Okay. Councilman Strong?
I'll just basically repeat what Shirley just said. I've been in contact with you and with Mark in recent days, and as you two know, we're continuing to work on the Budget Committee report, and hopefully we'll have that ready for the rest of the council very soon.
Councilman Strong's been working hard on trying to get the numbers where they need to be, and it sort of makes sense to everybody, so I appreciate his effort and that. One thing I did want to report on, kind of ties in with our Budget Committee, is we identified as a Budget Committee that we were working on was the Odyssey Program. There's another leg to that that I've been working on with the Sheriff's Department and the Connersville Police Department. The grants were approved for both the Connersville Police Department and the Sheriff's Department to get scanners and printers for the Sheriff's Department, three units each, saves the county about $2,100 in grant money. It's electronic ticket system that's used to scan the barcodes in the back of driver's licenses and automatically uploads that to the courthouse, so less errors, quicker process, local ordinances can be entered into that as well. The city's getting six laptops and six scanner-printer units as well for their use. It's about $10,500 for them that they're not having to pay. We were asking why the county doesn't get any laptops. The Sheriff's Department already has laptops, and they're recently purchased within a year, and the police department, the Connersville Police Department, does not have any. So the Odyssey system has been a benefit not only to us as a county, but to the city as well. So total savings to the county and the city, we're looking at upwards of $34,000 for the county, this $2,000 added on to it, so it's another, I think it's at $36,000 plus the city, and we're looking at almost $47,000 that we're not having to pay out of our own pocket, so that gets a good thing. And we, as we've talked as a Budget Committee, we have to identify more and more of these types of things because we're trimmed up as much fat as we can out of the budget, and we need to be lean and mean in other areas, so we're trying our darndest to try and do those things, so we appreciate the efforts of those involved. Commissioner? Commissioner Bart?
Last two meetings, we've authorized different repairs. The elevator down on the annex is still not quite finished. They got the jack portion finished, but then they found out that the side rails were bad, and we have to get a price on them and get those fixed, and then that elevator in the annex will be fixed. Tonight, you're going to hear from Jenna and Ben concerning requests for additional appropriations from probation, community corrections, and 9/11, and what that is about. Our IT director is just plain snowed. We're getting backed up, and a lot of stuff's not getting done, there's no way for him to catch up. We've come to agreement with those three departments, that they have money that they can, if you will, appropriate, they can put for a helper for Ben. When we, if we do that, they're requesting, and I agree with it, that they get eight hours of IT time per week, per department. But we have to, either we have to pull Ben over here and keep him full-time here, right now the city's paying half his salary, or get him some help. So that will solve the problem without taking taxes, you know, general fund dollars out. That's what that is about.
And I see here on the additional appropriation that 9/11's only asking for five hours and probation's asking for eight.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And probation and community corrections are putting the money into the bill, and 9/11 Today, we authorized doing some work down at Surveyor's Office. We're getting ready to move the building damage from the area planning down to the Surveyor's Office, because the nature of his job, Ben, we took his assistant away, he's out of the office, and I've talked to people who've been down there five times to catch him, and he's not there, and that's, if we move him down there to Surveyor's Office, at least there'd be somebody there to answer the questions, when he'll be in, or to make an appointment for him to be there, because it's not fair to the public, we don't feel where you have to keep a chasing somebody down to get a public service done. We authorized this morning, subjug to the council's appropriations, buying a new tractor down at the Highway Department. We've got a, our mowing tractor down there is old and it's just completely shot. We got bids from three different places, and we authorized the new John Deere tractor at the Los quote, hoping that you would appropriate the money. As far as the Highway Garage, it's moving forward. People designed the building. I had one meeting with us after our last Commissioner's meeting, met with them this morning, along with Jay, to, we needed more information on what our needs was down there, so hopefully, before long, we'll have plans on that, so we can start building the garage yet. I think that's the main things that we- Oh, we did, we did award a contract for the reassessment this morning to Ed Felord, who has been doing it, and that was Kathy Roos' recommendation. Courthouse lawn improvement, the front of this courthouse has needed some dressing up for a long time, and the Fayette County Garden Club has agreed to come down there and fix that up, put plants and roses out there, put some plants alongside the steps, and we really appreciate that. Along with that, those two big pine trees out there, the baguettes have got them, and they're dying, and are going to have to be cut down. We authorized doing that today. We'll cut them down and then plant two new ones in there probably to take their place. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for the Commissioner?
Barton, while you're up there, let me make sure I'm clear on your IT plan. Is your plan to let community corrections, probation, and 9/11 pay for an assistant for Ben Houston, or is it to cover the city's part of Ben's salary and keep Ben?
That hasn't been decided yet, and in reality, the city has already paid their portion for this year. So, and I don't think it would probably be fair just to call off the city and say you don't have an IT director tomorrow, but with, you know, if we can get good qualified people to help Ben out, and a part-time person isn't necessarily going to go to there, we're just going to have extra help to do the work.
Okay, so the city's locked in for this year?
The city's already paid for this year.
Okay. That only leaves you one option then, right?
Well, you know, I mean, you could say, "Well, we're going to give you your money back and just keep Ben here," but we'll decide a little later on which way we want to go. This does give you an option of having somebody to answer the phone and answer the simple questions while Ben is working on computers or doing something more difficult, it'll give you a chance to see how it does work out with the assistant instead of having Ben over here full-time by himself.
Okay, that satisfies my question.
Ben, are you here?
Yes, sir.
What's the requirements going to be in your time with the Odyssey, with the data exchange and so forth? Can you anticipate that yet?
Minimal upfront was what was communicated to me. The state JTAC has put a system in our network that they can remote into and do most of the work. The data pools happen at night, and they have a team working from there. A lot of our resources are going to be used come October, after the JTAC team has been here training on Odyssey, after they leave, making sure there's no gaps in training and helping the offices through there. But so far, my part's going to be very minimal.
So basically, just to call you if there's any setting change or-
Correct.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The one thing I did forget to report is, we do finally have somebody to fix our front steps out here that, I don't know, it just went maybe sometime this summer. We have signed a contract with Smarali out of Richmond to repair those steps.
How will that be repaired? You know how they're going to repair that?
Yes. What they're going to do is just extend the landing, so they'll pour right on top of that, on top of each step, you'll have, you'll have a full pour, the depth of the, or the height of the risers, pour on down, which will mean the last step will extend out one place.
Okay.
They're going to pour them, they're going to redo the rails out there and extend them, paint them up.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business, anybody's work?
Before we move on, I'd like to say a thank you to, number one, the Budget Committee, but especially to Dale and Debbie for providing the information to the news examiner. I mean, it is concerning, when the city talks about an emergency, and a lot of the, they're experiencing a lot of the things that we also experienced, and it's good to see real-life data instead of a lot of speculation, so, you know, the council has made some, you know, very hard decisions over the last several years. It wasn't something that we just started doing. I know from day one, when we came on this council, we started working towards that, and I appreciate the information in the paper, so that everyone has the opportunity to read what the, you know, what the expenditures and what the savings have been. Thank you.
I agree. Thanks. Moving on to new business, we will introduce our new Economic Development Director, Mr. Dan Parker. I'd like to come up here and introduce yourself and-
Sure.
Share with us what you've been working on.
Before I do that, I want to make a formal introduction here. My name's Dan Parker. I look forward to working with you. Parker, I think I know you.
Yep.
Shirley?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Jim?
I think I know you, too.
I think so.
I think so.
Neil?
How are we doing, Dan?
Looking forward to working with you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You, I don't know. So, thank you.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thanks, Dave.
You might never have the pleasure.
Chris Appel.
Chris, Dan Parker.
Nice to meet you, Jim.
Is this the-
This is the speaking place.
Chosen spot. Well, I appreciate the time to stand before you and give a little report. I had my first report to my employer last night, the board, so I'll kind of glean over that and give you some background and some insight as to what I've been working on for the first two weeks, starting my third week yesterday, and so I'm green as a gore, just starting out. A little bit about me, lifelong resident, born and raised here. Mother and father, Robert and Martha Parker. My dad was an old Ford Rex manufacturing Filco individual who worked and retired from Ford. My mother was a stay-at-home mother most of her life, worked a little bit at Cox's Supermarket. My mother's roots go back into Bentonville and Harrisburg with the Martins, Hafelman's, Crawford's, Hex, and so forth on my mother's side. My dad is an immigrant, immigrant from Utah, so don't hold that against me. I'm happily married to an Everton girl, her name, Marcia Simpson. We have four beautiful children, are all grown up, nine grandchildren, one great-grandson and one great-grandson on the way at the end of May. So that's a little about me, in case you wanted to know. Most of this first two weeks is getting acclimated. When I interviewed for the job, I told the committee that I met with that I had a lot of the skills and a lot of the tools necessary, I felt, to do this job. And evidently, I convinced them, because they hired me. Fifteen years in business for myself, fifteen very successful years in business for myself back in the custom van days, near early, mid-'70s and '80s, and then a little stint with HH Robertson, flew the Friendly Skies for them, and did a lot of work for them for about 18 months, two years. And then in '90, I started working for Hill and Brand Industries, and had 22 good years with them, helped them achieve a lot of important goals. Got to travel all over the world and do a lot of things, and I believe that that made me a good candidate for this job. And I was surprised when I came to work that there was so much already going on. A lot of things that board members, certainly Dr. Hodges, the mayor, Barton, and a lot of others have been working on to help Connersville. Certainly, the Wazada addition is something that EDG had worked on in the past, and as probably all of you know, they've started production and they're up and running. Some of these things I can talk about with clarity and name names, but almost all of them, I cannot, and I hate that. I used to watch this on Channel 3, and invariably, they would talk about this company or that company that's thinking about coming to Connersville and couldn't give the name. I hated that. And now, now I am one. I'm in the middle of it myself, and because of confidentiality with the parties that are considering Connersville for a new home for their business, I cannot reveal their identities until they have either discounted Connersville or decided to come, and then an announcement date will be planned. I'm happy to report there is an announcement date planned for the 23rd of this month. Again, I can't tell you what it is. Wish I could. I hate this. There are some businesses up in the industrial park that are wishing to expand, and that's ongoing work. Barton's been very heavily involved in that. We're touching on and working, starting to work on this abandoned housing project. I have a, certainly a feeling that for us to entertain new business to Connersville, Connersville as a city, as residents, as the citizens, as voters, taxpayers, need to do everything in their power to- need to do everything in their power to make Connorsville appealing to new business. And that's a tall order. A lot of people, their homes are proud of their stuff. They like to have it beside their house, in front of their house, and on the other side of their house and behind their house. Sometimes their stuff is not very encouraging to new business. So voluntarily, I'm asking the good citizens of Connorsville, myself included, to take a look at your property, your homes, and pretend that you're a business coming to Connorsville and pretend that you're looking to move your family here. And is there something I, as a resident, could do to my property to make it a little more appealing? Or if I own a business, is there something I could do to my business to make it look a little nicer, a little better presentation? So when we bring these individuals to Connorsville and there are some coming, in fact, there's some coming this week, we want to make sure we have our best face on so that we don't turn anyone away. So we're involved in that abandoned house project, housing project. There is an individual. I'll talk about the one that's coming up Thursday. There's a company, a very well-known company, that is coming to look at the fifty-eight acres north of town, out by the airport, on the east side of One. They are looking to install a facility that would be a real blessing to Connorsville. As they, and they're a very well-known company and they are pretty well-to-do. And this is a new one that has come in since I've had this job. They're looking to employ three hundred and forty-five full-time workers. An average wage of fourteen seventy-seven an hour plus very, very good benefits. Their total investment would be fifty-four million dollars for a building and twenty-four point seven million dollars for equipment. And there are five locations vying for this opportunity. Connorsville's one of them. Four in Indiana, one in Ohio. So I'm excited. There's some good things happening for Connorsville. This announcement that'll come the twenty-third is not this same business that these folks are coming Thursday to meet with the city leaders and utility people. There's some requirements that they require by way of water and electricity that we're going to address those requirements. We believe that we can meet or exceed their requirements. And so it comes down to, will they like us? And we think they will, because we're gonna put on a real happy face for them and let them know that we're the town that they should settle their business in because it could be a great blessing to Connorsville. Before I sit down, is there any questions?
The one thing I just had a question on, one that you said about three hundred and forty-five jobs, that's it on a five-year period, is that correct?
Yes.
It's not immediately?
Not immediately. I omitted that part. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that.
Danny?
Yes?
Today, somebody came to me wanting me to make the banner. About this deal that's coming up, three hundred and forty-five jobs, fifty-four acres. And I said, why you want on the banner? And they said, welcome. I said, welcome who? Can't tell you. But the banner's made.
I know.
Yeah, the banner's made.
Thank you very much. I know. I hate this. I really do.
I understand.
If it was up to me, I would tell all of you. And I'd be proud to share it because it's really a good.
But if you did, every county around here would be knocking on the door.
Exactly. And then the people that hired me would just fire me and I'd be done in two weeks. So I want to go along in two weeks.
Of course, some of it too is, some of the companies don't want the word getting back to their people.
Exactly.
In case, get them in panic mode and there's a lot behind it, competition with other counties.
Yep.
It's not because the Economic Development Group wants to be secretive about it, but it's a competitive thing.
No, I'd much rather be open and tell you everything because I don't like secrets. I'd rather be open and tell you what's going on. Is there anything else?
Anybody have any questions for?
Uh, Dan, I got a quick question.
Sure.
Last, I think it was last week in the paper, there was a article about a brewery that's looking at, I think Anderson, to move in up there. And I know breweries, one of the main ingredients is water. Do you obviously, do you get much request for businesses that are pursuing water as one of the main sources?
Well, this business that's coming Thursday, that was one of their requirements. Certainly, volume of water and quality of water. And as you all know, we won a competition for best tasting water in two thousand and ten and two thousand and twelve. And we're gonna, we're gonna promote that. Some big signs that'll be in the room when they come in to see that Connorsville has some best tasting water in Indiana.
Because I mean, you know, that brewery, I mean, best tasting water, like Coors, that's one of the base things they?
You're right, Rocky Mountain. Yeah.
Yeah, right.
All right. Good point.
We just don't have any mountains, Mark.
I guess. We get springed up.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Before I sit down, I want to thank each of you for your support to EDG. I mean that. It means a lot to the future of Connorsville. And so I appreciate it and I know the whole board does too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess we'll hear from our sheriff. You're up. Banner up. Do you already have one?
I have one, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have one, Debbie?
I do have one.
Okay. We have the two thousand and thirteen jail report. We're required to give these out, give these out every year. And this is sort of my last one. So unless the new sheriff makes me do it next year, which could happen. I want to start sort of going to page three. I'm not gonna bore you with the whole thing, just the highlights. In two thousand and twelve, we booked in one thousand twenty-five people. In two thousand and thirteen, we booked in one thousand forty-three. So we're up a little. The biggest change there is the women. Two hundred and sixty-one in two thousand and twelve, we're up to three oh one in thirteen. The guys dropped by about twenty. Our average count is about a hundred and fifteen a day. That's up from a hundred and eight last year, or in two thousand and twelve, our average daily population. We have a hundred and fourteen beds. So you can see, on an average, we're at least one over every day of the year. If there's any questions on this as we go, just shut me off, raise your hand, and I'll answer it.
Can I ask you one quick question?
Go ahead.
I was talking to somebody this past weekend, they were asking about, remember when the state used to, you've touched upon this once before, but I forgot what you said. Do we don't have that contract anymore?
From Department of Corrections, yes. We used to hold those, obviously, some of you on council knew that. The last year, we were, I hold the actual holding facility, we made almost a half a million dollars. That's the most made since we've had that, had that ability to do that. And then we've got to where we had our own prisoners in there and we were running about a hundred and seventy a day, which is just impossible to maintain in our little facility, even though it's a hundred and fifteen, fourteen beds. So DOC took their prisoners out because we have our own. And I think we try to make sure people understand that, that we're not, we're not bringing in prisoners from out of state. These are our own people in Connorsville, Fayette County, all right? So they're not trucked in, they're our own residents.
So is the reason we lost that because of our capacity?
Yeah. We couldn't maintain our own people and hold the extra we were getting paid for. We just, we were waived.
So let's just say that the capacity, when we went down to thirty people, would that be something we could do again?
It would take us, it would have to get down to, I think it's about seventy as an average, and then we could start holding more DOC again. And actually count on that money.
Would that be over a period of months? You'd have to say?
I thought it was all, was there, I wonder, almost like six or eight months? We had to run an average of seventy.
Before they were now, you did.
And as you can see, I don't ever see that happening with the, not with what we got. So the next page, the Department of Corrections money. In two thousand and twelve, we earned seventy thousand dollars. And some of them just rounding these, there's a little, there's some numbers after them. In two thousand and thirteen, we raised a hundred and forty-five thousand, three eighty-five. So we jumped that up about seventy-five thousand bucks from twelve to thirteen. The next page, charging statistics. We always list the top ten charges for each year. In two thousand and twelve, it was theft. Two thousand and thirteen, it's theft again. Those were up by about ten. OVWI, the same thing. OVWIs are actually down, you know, by about twenty or so. Battery come in third, which is people fighting. Possession of controlled substance, fourth. Possession of paraphernalia. I want to touch on that one just for a minute. You can sort of see where in two thousand and twelve, we had seventy-four of those. In two thousand and thirteen, we have a hundred and forty-eight, okay? Doubled. And those are mainly needles that we're finding on the people we're arresting. So that really ups, you know, the danger level for the officers out here who are patting these guys down because they, if you can believe this, they don't always come clean with what they got on. So we're really concerned with that one. One of the ones that's not on here anywhere that we're really happy about is burglaries of businesses or homes. We're happy that that's not on there and that we're, I don't want to say we jinx ourselves, but we're sort of controlling that, I think, you know, to an extent, to where it's not, it's not making it to the top ten. Okay? And I'm sort of glad. Thefts, those are shoplift, those include all shop liftings, drive-offs from filling stations, everything that's a theft is listed there for that. So that's not like they're going in here and stealing your TV. Under the criteria for the staffing, we're still about six officers short as required by the analysis that we have and the formula that's used. That's two per shift to be at, you know, adequate staffing to actually man the jail to where it should be and control, you know, the amount of prisoners that we're dealing with. Transports on the next page. Two thousand and thirteen, we drove sixty thousand miles in transports. That's doctor's appointments, that's for trips to prison, that is psych evals, that's everything in just transports throughout the state. We, now that we're not a holding facility for DOC, though, we're having to take those guys to prison ourselves. And sometimes that's ten, ten people, so it requires a couple of, three trips. We were using the van from Community Corrections, the transmissions went out of that and they're not gonna fix it. So we're, you know, we're having to haul them up, you know, three at a time, so to speak. You know, that's part of doing business with DOC. When we were holding them, they would come and get them. When that contract was done and they pulled all their people out, we now have to take them up there as soon as they're sentenced. Overtime. Overtime in two thousand and twelve was twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. In two thousand and thirteen, that's been cut down to eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-six, almost five thousand bucks. Medical statistics on the next page. Two thousand and twelve, we had a hundred and thirty-seven thousand in medical expenses. Two thousand and thirteen, we have a hundred and thirteen thousand. Most of this, I've told you guys before, this is probably one of the things I'm most proud of when it comes to these, cutting this budget and our expenses. And before I'm done, before the end of the year, I'm going to try to figure out, we almost done it today, how much we've saved over the last eight years over phone calls, after phone calls, negotiations, arguing, explaining the state statute over and over and over to every institution, medical institution we deal with, you know, in the last eight years. It's taken a lot of work. I do all this myself, it's sort of my thing. I'm good at bargaining, so to speak, and arguing, as some of you sort of know. But we cut those costs down to where it's manageable. And we're required to take care of those guys. No matter what they do in there, if they break their hand hitting the wall, we have to pay for it. It's the law, we can't violate it. I don't like it, but we have to do it. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. The jail kitchen, that's a huge budget, three hundred thousand bucks. We serve, you know, we're averaging a hundred and fifteen a day. We're serving, what, three hundred and forty-five meals a day, every day, every day of the year. So we're figuring that out at about three dollars and ninety cents a meal. For those of you who ate lunch out today, I guarantee you, if you didn't eat at home, you didn't pay three ninety for your meal. So, how much was your meal today? I don't want to ask. So, any questions on the kitchen? Any questions on the medical?
I'm an inmate. Do you have any inmates to help with the cooking?
Yeah, we have some inmate workers. They don't help with the cooking, they help with the serving, they help with the laundry and that kind of work. But the cooks, we have three cooks that do the, in the kitchen do all the cooking. Other than that, the report, I'm not gonna go through all this other stuff that we, the inmate showers and stuff and some of the doors need some repair. The padded cell, it takes a beating every time we have it repaired. And we put a guy in there, he, they seem to be able to find the little crack that's in there. And then before you know it, they've got it ripped off the wall and they're eating it before we get back there. It's just what they do. We recoup some restitution from some of the people, but some of them, they don't have any money, so it's really tough to get. That's gonna need some repair coming up and I'll be back to talk to you about that. So that's our report. We passed out, Captain Jones and I passed out to, I think, every council member sort of some salary incentives, some things we talked about in comparison to what the city guys are and comparable to other law enforcement agencies, you know, in our surrounding community. And almost every one of you, when you passed that out, you looked at it and said, oh, thank you, it looks real good. Where did we find the money? That seemed to be the general question. Well, if my numbers are correct, we have made seventy-five thousand dollars extras from DOC, five thousand extra cut out of overtime, and saved twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars for medical expenses in two thousand and thirteen compared to the year before. That's a total of a hundred and three thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. So if you ask me, where do we find the money? We're asking for sixty-three thousand bucks in that first proposal. That still leaves you forty thousand bucks. I don't know where else to tell you, then there's the money. Sort of up to you guys to decide what you do with it, how you split it up. But we have been doing this same thing with this money for the last eight years. The same kind of savings, the same kind of generation of our own funding, so to speak. And when we labbed the half a million dollars from DOC, that was all money generated from my officers' work and the stuff they put up with in that jail. And to date, short of not losing except, you know, one police officer, we haven't recouped much of that benefit. So it's really tough to stay motivated, to continue to work as hard as we do and keep these numbers where they are and make the money we make without any, you know, reciprocation back to us. It's really tough. And, you know, not to step on anybody's toes, but I like to think that in the sheriffs I've worked for in the past, I would like to go back to the council meetings in the last year of their final term and see who has stood here and browbeat you guys for money and do these reports and have these kind of numbers, this kind of success. I'd like to compare them and to see where we are and where we rank with that. Because I was there for all of them and I know where we were. So if you have any questions about this, that's my food for thought on the money and where to find it. I don't know any other way than to show you. There it is. We made it. And I know we still, there's gonna be some argument because I've dealt with councils before. They say, well, we used that set hundred and forty-some thousand for that DOC, offset your budget. Well, no matter what happens at the jail. Well, no matter what happens at the jail, whether I have a hundred and fifteen inmates or whether I have twenty, you still have the lights on, the heat's still the same, cooling's still the same, water usage is down a little, food's down a little, but everything else is going to stay the same, because we just don't shut down like other agencies. So, if you have any questions, everybody knows where I've worked, everybody has my cellphone number. I hear from several of you, I, once a week, okay? And I appreciate the feedback, any information you have, any help I can give you with our budget, with anything to do in this county to help the employees, I make myself completely available to help you in any way I can.
Sheriff Wilson, I have a, I have a question. And first off, thank you for the report, and we do appreciate the savings. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but since you're not campaigning.
Right.
But I'd like to get the question out there on the floor for those that are campaigning. Mr. Hanson used to come and attend our meetings every month. And he put out a presentation, I think it was early twenty thirteen, and it wasn't the first time that that was brought up either, but that, considering the financial straits that both the city and the county are in, the potential combining of services.
Right.
That, that we can take advantage of. And I think the county and city have worked together for many of those things. And successfully, I might add.
Right.
But there are a couple of large projects that have been put out there on the table, but no one has ever gone there.
Right.
And one of the, of course, the biggest opportunities, I think, is the combination of the city police and the sheriff's department.
Right.
And there are so many things that you combine now. And I think, you know, that's absolutely a result of you yourself as sheriff and our chief of police, knowing the importance of working together.
Right.
Certainly, it isn't easy. I know there's union and non-union questions, there are seniority questions, and, and many others. But perhaps, your experience and, again, the chief of police experience, if, if we were to throw some things out there on the table and maybe hear some debate from those that are hoping to be sheriff and to continue in the chief of police position as well. I just think that the straits that we're in, we, we have no idea that times are going to get any better anytime soon.
Right.
And with your experience and your passion for saving money and looking at ways to do things, you know, and the new fashion, I'd appreciate anything you could do or suggestions, whisper in someone's ear.
Right.
Some ideas that the city and the county could use to make something like that work.
Well, I think, I think some things could be combined, and I think already some resources are mixed with myself and with Dave Counselor. We help them on calls, they come help us on calls when we have one guy working. We have that understanding with each other. We've done it since I've been the sheriff, and it was done before that, when I was just a road officer, that we've always worked well together. I think there's some things that, that probably could be done in cost savings, but it's going to take some concessions and the city, and I, I've heard enough and read enough in the paper and listened to, you know, several complaints, that my only comeback is, is, well, you know, welcome to our world, and welcome to reality, finally. And we've been, you guys have been here, Jim, we've been suffering through this for three or years or so, at least. So, they're going to have to make some changes. I would hope that the next sheriff will, you know, do some of the things I've done, not do everything I've done, because we, we've had some mistakes. But would, pick up this, the budget stuff is huge to me, because that impacts the taxpayer and it impacts the employees. Again, I've said this in these meetings before, the sheriff makes a very, very good wage. He should be involved in just more than answering the phone and sitting at the desk. He needs to be more involved. He makes great money, and not just at the sheriff's department. I think he needs to be helping council, the commissioner, giving his input. Now, if he's completely off his rocker, which I have been accused of being, then we got issues, but they, they need the help, I think. Dave and I have worked good on, on stuff together, the city guys work well with our county guys, and we need that. I mean, they're talking about being down to two, two or three officers on the road at one time. Well, I say we're down to one, but we've been down to one since I've been at the sheriff's department, and since nineteen eighty-nine. So we're sort of used to that. They're sort of not. And we do go after some of their calls. They do come and help us. We can mix those two. Now, whether you could combine them and have just one entity, that would be great for us, because these guys are going to need to, they're going to need a pay raise, or those guys are going to need to come down, I don't see that happening. And we would love the extra help in the county. I would say that, would they like the extra help in the city? If we're available, I'm sure they would. We would see more of a benefit out of that than what the county does, or what the city does.
Well, the report that you gave each of us, and I appreciate the work that you did, because the, the wage committee is looking at that.
Right.
And again, you know, there are no easy answers that are going to happen overnight. But the idea that it behooves us all to work together, just like you have, when it's needed. And certainly, just look at the turnover that could have been avoided. If in fact, our wage scale were more, you know, in line with doing the same.
We just sent a guy to the academy Monday, and you know, and we still have an open spot. Actually, we have two, but you guys have told me to keep the one open. But again, we, we just can't keep losing people. I mean, there, there could be, if the election goes one way or the other, we could be hiring another new policeman to fill a spot. And that's going to give us, you know, four, five guys with less than five years on, less than a car loan, out here enforcing the laws, carrying guns, putting people in jail. And if you think we have liability now, we can't continue to lose our good health to go up the street. We can't do it. And I'm not going to get back on that soapbox, because we don't have time for that. I would love to, but we won't. So, again, I, I will help in any way I can, but I'm not, I'm not going to sit back for the next eight months and allow this dog to lay down, take a rest. I'm going to come in here, I think, thinking, every month from this point on and beat it, as long as it'll bark. So, if you have any questions, feel free to call me and ask me if I can help in any way. But I don't know what else to do, other than, I mean, we're doing everything we can to generate funding that we can, okay? We doubled it. I don't have nine-one-one's revenue. I wish to goodness I did. I don't have it. She does, I don't. But again, our proposal we presented to all of you guys, we understand the budget problems and the crunches that are here. We, we, we work here, we know what they are, okay? So, when that's why there was a given and said, hey, we want twenty-five thousand dollars per guy. Have a good day. That, that's impossible. Half of that's impossible to get at one chunk, impossible. So all we're asking for is a fair shake with our other representatives. You guys are talking about hiring Ben a, some support, some help. I think he totally needs it. But are you going to just grab anybody off the street to stick with him? I guarantee you, you're not. He's going to have special training. He's going to have to go through special training, exactly what the policemen do, the deputies do. You're not just pipping somebody out, throwing a badge on them and a gun, saying, there you go, go enforce the statutes of Indiana and the constitution. It's not going to happen. So, our people are specially trained, they go to special school, they're there now for sixteen weeks. They have to, if they do not meet that training, they're gone, they can't be a policeman here. So when you say, we're going to, we're going to pick over who he hires, he's not just going to grab Jim Wolfe and say, you're the new IT guy today. Guarantee it. He's going to want somebody specifically trained. And I'm sure you're not going to pay him nine sixty-two an hour, it's part-time starting out. Because if you do, you'll wind up with somebody who's not trained, nor can be trained. So, that's all I have to say. If you guys have any questions, call me, email me. Mike, we appreciate the stuff, the work on the printers and the scanner things. Again, on the laptops, we just bought on new laptops last year for all the officers. We already have them, they're mounted in the vehicles. We choose to spend our money there. That, those were all bought with non-taxpayer money, bought out of my commissary account, through inmate, you know, generated money generated by the inmates. So, they sort of funded our computer project. So, anything else? All right, thank you, have a good evening.
Well, Treasurer Mary Ayers was in here briefly. She was going to address us on something. Surely, it's something you've been working on, the outsourcing for tax statements and so forth. She came in here, talked to Debbie and I briefly, and apparently she's already done that, to our surprise. She's, it's going to come out of contractual funds, and she's, she's already moved, done the pattern.
She, she was in here because she was going to need initial money to pay, to have to pay, I think, I was, I, the way I understood it, Mike, was that she going to have to pay for the postage upfront to the money that, that, to the company they were going to contract with. And she was trying to figure out where she was going to pay it. I said, I said, well, if it's going to be a contract for it, we do have a certain amount of money in contractual services, and that's going to be where that's going to have to be paid. It's going to have to be accounting expense, so. I think she said it was about.
Forty-five hundred?
Yeah.
She had twenty-five hundred in stamps, and we just said, we'll probably take out a contractual services and leave the twenty-five hundred for stamps alone. So that's done, so now we just talked to.
That's outstanding, and I think everyone in the, in the county, all the taxpayers will benefit, because there should be savings, increased savings every year if, you know, as, as they send these electronically.
It'll be minimal upfront, the savings will save you minimal, but over the course of time, it'll, it'll be more savings to the county each and every year.
Now, the commissioners have, did have not seen a contract for that, but she said it isn't required, so I.
Barton, you might want to just double check with that, with Mary. Yeah, we didn't know anybody until she walked in. Just something for you to put on your plate to follow up, I guess, with Mary. Nothing else on the new business, we'll move on to transfers. First item is the cemetery commission, you want to come for it, cemetery? You're asking for twenty-five hundred dollars, you've got a transfer request in there as well? I think we have some questions on that. No, I do. Looking at your transfer request. You're asking to transfer twenty-five hundred from, what is it, Stone Restoration? And to your, another, other, other supplies for twenty-five hundred. And your transfer request is saying that to pay for mileage and gas reimbursement for volunteers, is that what this is for?
That'd be for the board members, not for the volunteer, it'd be for the volunteer board members, not the other volunteers that help us.
Okay. So, is this gas mileage to, in their personal vehicles to and from the cemeteries?
Yes.
At the risk of sounding insensitive, I don't understand why we would pay for mileage for gas for volunteers. I've volunteered plenty of times and I, for many things, and I don't ask for reimbursement for gas or mileage. So I have a hard time, we agreed that we would pay for gas for weed eaters and mowers and things of that nature, but I mean, I think it's part of being a volunteer.
Well, last year alone, my husband and I, and that's just for us, we put over twenty-five hundred miles on our vehicles, and money out of our pocket as well towards these cemeteries. And you're getting free labor, and we just thought it would be sensible to ask for, because the cost of gas is going up.
Right.
To reimburse us for at least our gas mileage.
I mean, we, we, you're doing great work, don't get me wrong. It's not, we don't appreciate what you're doing. But we've also got a responsibility to the taxpayer to justify that, and, and I understand what you're doing. It sounds, it sounds cold, it sounds insensitive.
And I understand that. We used to have a cemetery department that would go out and do all this stuff, and they were on a budget, and they had a budget for gas and vehicles and all the equipment that they needed. Whereas we're putting our own personal vehicles on the line to go out and do the work. And we just thought, and we're even asking for only thirty-five cents a mile, we're not asking for a large amount.
And my next question is, do you keep a track of mileage, you have a book with mileage and receipts?
We have, we are starting this year, because the commissioners did say that that, you know, we should start documenting that, if we were going to get mileage, then we'd have it. We personally kept documentation of ourselves, but because there was no mileage reimbursement last year, there's nothing, I mean, there's nothing you can do about it.
My next question is, is it even allowable for us to approve at thirty-five cents a mile in the federal? Is it like fifty-five or fifty-six cents?
I think we're paying, the county's paying like forty-three.
Oh, you're getting a good deal.
We just didn't want to seem out of line, asking, oh, we're just enough to cover our gas and oil, that type of thing, for our own vehicle. We didn't want to seem like we're asking for more than what we deserve. It's just the gas is getting so high, and we put in a lot of miles.
I understand. Commissioner Barker, last year there was talk of a vehicle or something, was, and I don't remember that conversation, that vehicle was, was that vehicle available for them or not? Or was there not a vehicle anymore, Jay, or? Barton, you know what, do you remember that, the cemetery?
The cemetery, the cemetery did have a truck, a full-time cemetery.
But we don't, they don't have it anymore?
It was reassigned to.
Okay.
To the maintenance department, and then also, the assessor uses that too, when, when they go out and make. Yeah. Due to not having a vehicle that will, that they can get into some of the places they need to get into, the counties.
Do you know what I think? A non-employee of the county to, since they're volunteers, to use a county vehicle?
I mean, you'd have to check with your insurance, but. Off the top of my head, I would think that they would not be covered.
Well, I kind of jumped into that. You, you printed out this nice thing here, and I cut you off at the knees, which I don't, I didn't mean to do. But, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, please.
Now that it rained on your parade?
Okay, we feel we've made great progress in our first year of the cemetery commission, and many things were accomplished, even though we got a really late start. Last fall, we gave you all a copy of the report, the board, the report the board provided to the commissioners documenting our work in two thousand thirteen. If you looked at some of the pictures in that report, you could see how the weeds and brush were over our heads and the progress that was made. We plan on continuing our efforts this year and getting more of the Pioneer Cemeteries taken care of. At the commissioners meeting on March eighteenth, we requested permission for twenty-five hundred dollars so we can purchase approved supplies. They gave us our approval to come to you today and request your permission for this amount to be appropriated. And there's a list there of the things that, the supplies, the fence posts, and just things you need to repair fences and take care of the things that we deal with in the Pioneer Cemeteries. And then, we also requested, because of rising cost of gas, that the board members be granted reimbursement for documented mileage for two thousand fourteen and forward. During this past season, Dave and myself alone have put over twenty-five hundred miles on our combined vehicles in caring for our cemeteries. Mr. Barker asked what dollar amount it would take, and the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars was decided upon. The commissioners asked Debbie what funds were available, and she said that she could request twenty-five hundred dollars be moved from the restoration to our budgeted gas miscellaneous line. Debbie said that she would take care of that request at this meeting. We would appreciate it very much if you please, if you could please grant these requests. Our work has already started this year, and we've provided some photos for you of what we've been doing.
The transfer has to be approved by the council, because it's being moved from a services line item to a supplies line item, so it's going from a three to a two, which requires council. So, it's going from a three to a two, which requires Councilman Three.
And I doubt if you noticed or not, on the pictures on the second page, we visited Wright Cemetery this past Sunday, and that is the grandparents of Wilbur Horrible Wright. So, it's kind of an honor to go visit that cemetery up there. Does anybody have any questions?
Two separate questions.
Do I understand, number one, you need the twenty-five hundred dollars of supplies to continue to operate this year, and then you're also requesting the twenty-five hundred dollars to split amongst all the board members for the mileage?
Right, with document, we would have to document it and turn it in for reimbursement. And that's kind of a, just an estimate. We don't know what everybody else had mileage-wise. You know, I can only speak for ourselves, and it may not be anywhere near that, but then the money would just go back into the fund at the end of the year. We just kinda guesstimated upon the mileage that we had.
I understand what my, you know, talking, and I'm sure, you know, we've all volunteered for different projects here and there, but there's volunteer time and there's excessive volunteer time, and you know, if you're taking the place of, or providing something that we would otherwise be paying for.
Okay. Could I ask a couple of questions, Mr. Parker?
Yes, you may, Mr. Strong.
Okay. Currently, we have a balance of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents in the cemetery fund. Now, Commissioner Barker, I know, didn't the commissioners recently agree to a contract with the...
The restoration.
A restoration contract?
Yes, we did.
Okay, what was that amount?
Forty-nine, forty-nine hundred, I think.
Forty-seven fifty, I think it was.
Forty-seven fifty?
Four thousand seven fifty.
Now, I don't know if you planned on doing more than one restoration this summer, you know, there was like a...
Okay, can, does anyone know for sure what our mowing contract, our cemetery mowing contract, would cost this year?
Yeah, it's about twenty-two thousand.
How much?
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand? That's got another twenty-nine. That would have to come out of the twenty-nine. There's twenty-six thousand seven hundred fifty already spoken for. That'll leave you about three thousand dollars left in the cemetery fund, Mrs. Nichols.
Yes, but we will still have tax draw this period too. And it's not to say that twenty-five hundred, we're gonna spend the whole amount, but we do need to have something there in case we need supplies.
I understand, Parker, you, I looked at your list of supplies, you certainly gotta have something to work with, that's for sure, yeah. I just don't, what I'm trying to do is, the quick math here, is make sure that we're not over obligating ourselves in the cemetery fund. So, we don't have a whole lot of room, yeah, not a whole lot of room financially to play with there. We wouldn't be able afford to get all this work done if it wasn't for the volunteers. Matter of fact, we're getting more work out of the volunteers than we were getting when we, when we had paid employees in that department. Kudos to you and your group for that. You've done a good job.
You need to do the transfer first.
Yep.
I can't, I can't even remember what their levy was this year. Was it about seventeen thousand or eighteen thousand? Something around in there, and then...
I don't have that.
About eighty-nine percent of it.
I don't have that with me. We, you know, we will, we will get a little bit of money in June, and I don't know how much, a little bit in December. But, that's, that's gonna be pretty close. In your transfer request, you noted stone restoration. What does that mean?
They, they, they had ten thousand dollars in their budget for stone restoration, and the contract that was awarded to Mr. Walters was forty-seven fifty, and so they were gonna take some of the money from that budget to transfer over for mileage.
In that line item.
Okay, that...
It's, it's where they had a contract that was going to be.
That takes the confusion out of it for me. I understand now. We need to do the transfer first, or?
We need to do the transfer first. Is there any more discussion from the council?
Another question. There was a lot of discussion last year about different groups that had volunteered and wanted to assist once you had kind of a game plan going. Can you, how many different groups are helping you? They were talking about 4-H clubs and different...
At this point, we just have one. Because we got such a late start, everybody was into 4-H and everybody was, you know, it was like the end of June before we got our appropriation. So, we didn't have equipment, we couldn't get the groups. Everybody was already doing in the bicentennial, and everybody was already interested in everything else. Now, we do have a volunteer meeting coming up Saturday. There's an article in the paper today, you know, getting people called out, get them there to educate them on what we need and what we expect, and then we'll have a workshop work day in May and start putting that to work and teaching them proper methods and that type of thing.
Thank you.
So, at this point, you know, we've had volunteers, we, the VFW has volunteered to help out in several different ways, the Legion has volunteered to help out in different ways, but, and then there's our 4-H group that wants to adopt a cemetery. But as, we got started so late, they were already into other entities by the time, so it was just easier to just go ahead and work on what we could and then hopefully get them into it this year.
Have you approached, I mean, I think adopt a cemetery is probably a good idea. Is that something you're actively pursuing?
We're working on it, but we would have to get some documentation and some rules, you know, that type of thing made up, and we get people...
They'd be good to help.
We do have two, we have some twin boys that take care of one cemetery, and we have a husband and wife that take care of another one, and we just go and check on them periodically. And they've done a really good job, and so far, they're planning on doing that continued. If we can get people to do that and caretake them, then, you know, we are working on that as well.
Okay, I'd love to talk to you about that after the meeting.
Sure.
How many board members do you have?
Right now, we have five.
Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion for a transfer request, an amount of twenty-five hundred dollars in the Stone Restoration Fund?
I'll make a motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Would you like to ask for a roll call vote?
So, who got that second, Dale or Shirley? I'll say Shirley got it first.
Ladies first.
Councilman Winter?
I can't vote yet.
Yeah, I think you can. We have discussed this. We have discussed whether he can or can't vote. I believe you. I'd always ask, we're on the other roll call.
Yes, I mean, I know.
Councilman Strong?
Yes.
Councilman Wolf?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wise?
Yes.
Councilman Flum?
Yes.
Councilman Dobbie?
Yes.
The ayes have it, vote carry, five to one. While you're here, we'll just do the additional right away. Get back up here again, if that's okay with the council?
Yes.
Cemetery Commission, our board is asking for twenty-five hundred dollars in additional for other supplies, for materials for the Pioneer Cemeteries. Is there any discussion or did she cover that?
And I'd just like to point out that our supplies have to be approved by the commissioners. We can't just go out and buy just anything. We have to have their approval.
Okay. If there's no discussion, we'll entertain a motion for the additional, an amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for other supplies.
I'll move to approve the additional, twenty-five hundred dollars for cemetery supplies. I'll second.
We have a motion, it was seconded, for the additional for twenty-five hundred dollars for the supplies, materials. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have an album with us tonight. If you'd like to see after the meeting, things we've done.
What I've got in, I've got a transfer in for moving money from health insurance, which we started out at three-hundred-and-ten thousand in that line item, and what doing, we're paying for the union insurance, we're not even near that much. And I'm moving it over to equipment, so we can try to replace a mowing tractor, which has been over to Millers older at least three times last year, and we can't keep it running on the road, do anything with it. If you wanna mow the roadside, we've gotta find something better to use to do it. And we've checked around, and I've checked in the books and checked for tractors, and I've come up, the conclusion is cheaper to buy a new one than it is to buy a used one, because they want almost a new price for a used one. And we took, like Barton said, we got quotes from three different people, and Coen over in Oxford is where it is, Barton, was the lowest bid, and they offered all the equipment we needed on it. So, that's what we'd like to do with that transfer.
How much is it, Jay?
We're transferring sixty out of health insurance, sixty thousand out of health insurance over into a...
New equipment.
And the idea, the reason I went that high, 'cause we had the wreck of one of the trucks there at the garage, and we've got the insurance money on it, and we only got ninety-six hundred dollars, and that's not enough to replace a one-ton truck. And if we, whatever we have left over here, we can transfer into new vehicles and then try to replace our truck too, in the process. So, we can actually kill two birds with one stone with this.
How much is the new tractor?
New tractor is forty-seven-nine.
Does that include the mower?
Yes, that's a warranty, and it's a, it had all kinds of government discounts on it, 'cause it is new. It's got a hundred, was it a hundred-horse tractor, Barton?
Hundred-horse.
Hundred-horse tractor. It's a utility tractor, it's a five-hundred E, a John Deere, it's a nice tractor. They had one on the lot, but they actually wanted more for the one sitting on the lot, because they considered it used. It had like five hours on it.
Did you trade the other one in?
We will sell the other one, that's sales, what we'll do with it, yeah. We're using it right now to pour our broom, but that's about all that's feasible, to use for, every time you put a mower on it, it wants to quit on you. You don't wanna keep moving, keep seizing up.
So, you're just selling that tractor and the mower?
Yeah, no, we're gonna keep the mower.
You're gonna keep the mower, it's okay.
But we're just getting rid of the tractor when we get rid of it. Now, we've got an old Ford there at the garage, which is a ninety, and we need to get rid of it too. It was our old brush cutter, it's seen better days, you can't keep it on the road. And that's, I have any questions? So, that's that.
Anybody have any questions or discussion for Jay? If not, we'll entertain a motion for a transfer request, an amount of sixty thousand dollars for new equipment coming out of the health insurance budget line.
I move to approve it.
Seconded. Motion seconded. So, we have a motion seconded for the amount of sixty thousand dollars transferred from the health insurance for the equipment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries.
That's seconded.
Thank you.
They're enjoying that tractor.
They will, believe me. They're gonna do a lot of mowing in the rain with it.
Okay. Nine-one-one.
Barton spoke to that earlier.
Oh, that's for the IT. I'm sorry?
Nine-one-one.
You wanna come up and kill two birds with one stone, as Jay just said?
Sure.
Steal his one.
And actually, I've got to request anyway. As Barton was speaking earlier, we met with, well, I met with Michelle Dele, Director of Community Corrections, and we're requesting, probation's requesting fourteen thousand five hundred dollars out of the adult circuit probation user fees in order to, I think it was for a part-time IT person. We're just getting backlogged, both at Community Corrections and probation, with needs that we have, and we understand that Ben is overwhelmed with the things that he's having to do. I did contact the State Board of Accounts, who then directed me to Judicial Center, and when we're asking for dedicated for probation eight hours, if we get the fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, that was something that the Judicial Center indicated that we needed to have, because probation user fees by statute have to be used for the running of the probation department. So, there has to be some kind of documentation that's relating that that's what probation's using that money for. Now, we're asking that eight hours be dedicated, however, it doesn't have to be. If we have no need for that eight hours, then the part-time worker, I mean, it can be used for anything else in the county. It's just that we're needing it at least to have that dedicated in order to be able to use probation user fees for that type of thing. So, it's not like we're just kind of bartering for that, it's required by the statute, according to the Judicial Center. We have the money available in the probation user fees. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions for that.
Jenna, in the past, we've used probation user fees for various other things that you've needed over there. If we allow you to spend this money on IT support, is that going to cause some other area to starve for an additional from County General later in the year?
Not that. We'll have thirty-eight thousand seven hundred thirty-five left just in that fund, in the adult circuit fund. I don't foresee any major needs that we're going to have to becoming, asking for an appropriation in that amount. So, I think we're good as far as our standing with our balance right now in our, in our funds.
That's all the question I have.
Does anybody else have any questions for Jenna? If not, we'll do the two additional separately. We'll do the probation department first. We'll entertain a motion for the additional appropriation from the probation department, an amount of two thousand dollars.
No, that would be fourteen thousand five hundred for, yeah, that's my second request.
You got the wrong one. Fourteen thousand five hundred. Your motion?
Sorry.
So, move, it was seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded, move and seconded to the appropriate, the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And I'll go to the other one.
Okay, the second one I'm asking for is, we called it in the past miscellaneous, I did go to the State Board of Accounts, an explanation of the different funding, and it's really other, it means the same thing. And basically, other in any fund line is any, any category that doesn't quite fit the description of a fund line item. We've typically... We've typically had a miscellaneous item. We've always asked for miscellaneous. There are just some unforeseen, and actually, some things that just don't fit necessarily in any one category. Examples of that would be professional memberships. We do have memberships for what we call, it's funny, Popeye, this probation officer membership. We pay for that because when there's training around the state throughout the year, if you have a Popeye membership, it's cheaper to attend the training, and with nine employees, that adds up, so it's worth doing that. Another thing that I came across recently is juvenile probation officers are going to be required to go to placement facilities where we've placed kids, which can be all over the state. It required them to spend a night in order to be able to fit all the different facilities in. They went over on the western side of the state and just did it all at one time. I didn't appropriate for that in anything. I have an appropriation for training, but I don't have anything that would cover for meal reimbursement or hotel stay for something like that. So I'm asking for $2,000, that would be out of Superior Probation User Fee Funds, in order to cover any of those extra things. I'd asked for it in the budget for 2014. It was not approved, and I think it was confusion. I had moved that line item from one fund that we did it every year into the juvenile fund, and basically, it had said removed uninsured expenditures, because we had never asked for it out of the juvenile fund before. I was just trying to move money so that I wasn't depleting one fund when I was asking for a vehicle, in order to purchase a vehicle. I didn't want to deplete one fund completely for that, so I just had asked for it in a different fund. So I was just asking for the $2,000 appropriation. Does anybody have any questions with that?
Did I understand you were going to create a new line item for this $2,000? Like a miscellaneous line that you don't have now?
Correct.
Okay. Is that a line that we had removed in budget hearings once before, or...
It's never been removed before. We've always had it approved. I had just asked for it out of a different fund.
Okay.
I had moved it to the juvenile fund instead, and I think that just caused confusion, actually.
This gives you a little quicker flexibility.
Yeah, honestly, there's just some things they really wouldn't be appropriate to take out of an already appropriated fund. They don't fit.
Yeah.
And basically, I did go on the State Board of Accounts, where there are explanations of the different line items, and each line item has another section, just for that reason.
And they make the rules, and we have to go by them?
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have, Jenna.
Does anybody else have any questions for Jenna? Now, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the additional in the amount of $2,000.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Move second.
So moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Frank.
You always save the best for last, don't you?
We do.
Because usually, I think I'm last, so I just kind of picked that up there.
Actually, we've got to go back to nine-one-one.
I'm kind of hoping since I'm last, you're more likely to just approve it and get it over with so you can get out of here.
So we got another additional appropriation from nine-one-one in the amount of $8,000 that has to do with the IT personnel as well that Barton was talking about. I don't know if we need discussion on it or if we're going to make a motion.
This goes hand in hand with what we just did with probation. I'll move to approve the additional from nine-one-one for eight thousand.
So moved in seconded for the additional appropriation, the amount of $8,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
If I may, I'll just add to that. I know the Director of Community Corrections, Michelle Dudley, she basically goes through her board in order to get that money approved because it comes from Department of Corrections, and she's done that also.
She, it, her fund does not require additional appropriations because it's reimbursement, grant reimbursement, which does not require additional.
So she's kind of already taken care of that end of it on her side.
Unfortunately, we run out of time for you, Debbie.
Uh-oh. No, we really. I kind of, I kind of put it in because, well, it really isn't my office, but, you know.
Last is additional from the Auditor's Office for Elected Officials Training Fund, the amount of $1,500.
The funding for, the revenue from this fund is through recorders' fees. This was something new they set up a few years ago because they put in, the state put in place certain required continuing education for some of the various elected officials. And I know the surveyor is included in this, the auditor, the recorder, the treasurer, I believe. I think the assessor is also included. And this is, like typically, when we have expenses, like most of the conferences, the state called meetings that the state have, the auditor has two a year, and I think the clerk, I think the clerk is included in this, the clerk has two a year. Anyway, we typically pay that out of County General unappropriately because that is, that's how it's allowed by the state, and that's where the money to pay for that has always come from. There is some money in this, there isn't a lot of money, but, for instance, Warren Setoff, the new surveyor, he's had to go to some training to get up to speed on some things. So, I think he has a bill out there for $200 for something he had to go to. So, this will kind of, you know, fill in a little bit of that gap, and, you know, that will be available for those elected officials to qualify under the code.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, move second.
Second.
So moved in seconded, the additional appropriation of $1,500 in the elected officials training fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Motion carries. Do we have any patron concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
So moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Motion carries. Councilmembers, take out for signatures, please.